I'm not.
Well, you have to see her as it is.
There's the two absent. I don't just have to help. She's anything like you. I'm very proud of all being good. There's something on your sister. That's in the same place. It's a woman.
Okay, this is for January sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Now in session, please rise.
Please leave. This is the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
Before we begin, I would like to have us all respect a moment of silence for Sergeant Christopher Philly, who, as you all know, passed away this past week. Thank you, and thank you all for who are in the firehouse tonight for coming out in this weather. Tracy, if you please call the roll.
Councilmember Belton, here. Daskaludi?
Yeah.
Moranti?
Here.
Nisan?
Yes.
Morris?
Margaret?
Here.
Here, yes, here.
Fernhagen?
Here.
Roberts? Roney?
Here.
Sauer?
Yeah.
Bolo?
Here.
Presentee Pedro?
Here.
Coram present.
Can I have an introduction and a second to dispense with the reading of the minutes of December nineteenth meeting and place them on file? Dewan and Shersha. All those in favor, please take a fall to say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Communications of the C D. We made data from last data from last week. Did I have a most introduction in a second to place to receive these communications and place them on file? Dewan and Shersha. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Bills, Michael, could you please post the bills? Can I get an introduction in a second and the bills?
I'm having, sorry, I'm having, I'm having trouble seeing. Okay, thank you.
Shersha in a second. Go on. Questions?
Can we, can somebody explain me C D D G capital around these figures here maybe?
Say that one more time, Ken.
Can somebody?
Oh, yeah, just explaining it to Rich. That, those are all, this is all passed, passed through being paid from a grant. You may recall, we got a C B D G, C B D G grant of a half million dollars to help derelict buildings come up to code.
Yeah, I was part of that. So are these? Yes, are these what has been spent already?
Correct.
Okay, all right, and we have leftover, right?
Oh, yeah.
We have plenty.
Yeah. If you looked at the actual bill, you see there's a couple of roofs in there, roofs, is that the floor? Roofs? And other, you know, contractual, any construction items. So that is no, that is not coming out of any city money, it's coming out of their capital account dedicated to that. Is this program still open? Open for, they don't know until they get their final, you know, everything's paid for, if there's anything left over, they'll know then. But right now, it's not open to new applications. Any other questions about the bills? Okay, Ted, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye, thank you.
Daskaludi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Nisan?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Fernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Bolo?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie?
We have four resolutions from the other day, last week. What's your, is this?
We thought it was.
So we'll need a new introduction. Can I, we, pointing Commissioner Deeds, kind of introduction in a second, please. Dewan and Shersha. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Daskaludi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
My, Nisan?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Fernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts? Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Bolo?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie?
For the new members, you might be wondering what this is all about. Those are, in fact, all H P D members, and they need to be Commissioner Deeds, having something to do with when they sign documents. The next resolution reappoints Michael O'Hara and Nathan Woodhall as members of the Conservation Advisory Council. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Daskaludi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Nisan?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Fernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Bolo?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie?
The next resolution authorizes transfer of funds to the council council account for fiscal year twenty twenty three. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton.
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Can, can you explain this?
I think it was explained last, last week that it comes out of the general, it's going to our council, the council's council, council's attorney, and it comes from the general attorney fee account. And it's for last year.
Okay. Not, not that, Tom, not, yeah, just, thank you. I, I think we should explain things as we vote on them, that's all.
Thank you, Margaret. I will call vote, please.
Excuse me. Councilmember Belton, aye. Daskaludi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Nisan?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Fernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts? Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Bolo?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie?
The next resolution authorizes a fifty dollar donation from Orpheo L C to the fire department. This resolution authorizes us to give fifty dollars to the fire department. Sorry, I'm just being.
You've gone and.
But I'm glad that you're explaining that in time.
How? We had it.
Yes.
Okay, there's more money, and it's two hundred and fifty dollars from Time and Space Limited, also. To, oh, so we need a new introduction in a second in this case. Sorry, I'm giving you a second. Second, oh, okay. Shersha and Gary. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Daskaludi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Nisan?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Fernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts? Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Bolo?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie?
Okay, now we have the new resolutions. The first authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with Creighton Manning Engineering to conduct a speed limit evaluation in the city. Can I have an introduction in a second? Dewan. And Shersha?
Margaret?
Okay, and for those who don't remember, Margaret investigated, because this is part of our effort to reduce the speed limit, we're required to have an engineering firm conduct a speed limit evaluation, and this approves the funds for that evaluation. Questions?
How much is the funds?
It is seventy thousand five hundred.
The, the other bid, the other bid that we received was for sixteen thousand five hundred.
And we're looking to reduce it from the current thirty?
We are, we are, we are, there is a process. Last year, New York State changed the rules. Prior to last year, it was very, very difficult for a municipality to reduce the speed limit within the municipality uniformly below thirty miles per hour. Last year, I believe it was last year, rules were introduced that allowed municipalities to reduce the speed limit across the entire municipality to twenty-five miles per hour. However, this requires that there be a, an engineering statement that this does not impact minority neighborhoods, that it does not have negative impact. And so this is an agreement to have Creighton Manning evaluate the city of Hudson and to evaluate the impact of reducing the speed limit from thirty miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour. Very importantly, in, in some studies that I've looked at, the impact of pedestrian casualties in twenty-five mile per hour versus thirty mile per hour, it's a close to fifty percent decline in fatalities when you go from thirty to twenty-five miles per hour. There are also very significant decreases in collisions and accidents when you go from thirty to twenty-five because there is sufficient stopping time. It also reduces stopping time, very important in our town, for trucks and larger vehicles going from thirty miles an hour to twenty-five. It reduces the number of feet. So what this resolution is about is having Creighton Manning evaluate the impact so that we can then submit to the state of New York a request to reduce the speed limit within the city of Hudson from thirty miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour. Other municipalities have done the same. And I did, per Tracy, I got two written evaluations from two different engineering companies, and Creighton Manning came in at almost half of the price of the other organizations. So that's what this resolution is about.
Thank you. One other question, what's the likelihood of this being rejected by the state?
Very close to zero, Gary.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Daskaludi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Nisan?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Fernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts? Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Bolo?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie?
The next resolution authorizes the approval of the low bidder for removal of the asbestos pipe insulation from City Hall. An introduction, Dewan, second? Questions? Excuse me. So you may recall, excuse me, the renovation of City Hall, the only thing left is to remove the asbestos from the basement.
I, I looked at the, well, I don't see a timeframe. There's any timeframe on this?
We won't know until we get the contract together with them. Yeah, so once that's together, we'll.
But the R F P went out requesting the work to be done by March, February first.
I think so, yeah, yeah, so it'll be soon.
And we do know that amount did eat it yet, right?
No, we've been there long. They meant this in the forty-four thousand eight hundred fifty-six.
Just the lowest three. We go one, two, three, four, five of them. This is the lowest of them.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton. I'm sorry, aye. Daskaludi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Nisan?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Fernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts? Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Bolo? Presentee Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie?
The next resolution authorizes various transfers of funds within the fire department accounts. An introduction in a second, please. Introduction, Shersha, second? Go on.
So, can, can, sorry, can, I, can we look at what some of these?
Second, Margaret, Jenny had her, Jenny is okay to call you Jenny?
That's.
Jenny has.
Councilmember Belton.
Councilmember Belton.
I, I'm, I'm curious why this is being done. We, we, we have a budget that's been approved, and why do things get transferred? I, I'm curious, I'm, I'm.
Right, no, I know, and this has been a sticking point for Margaret as well. This is for twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
This is for, why things get transferred? Because some accounts have leftover money and some need money. As Margaret has pointed out in the past, this isn't the best system, really, in terms of, you know, making everything completely transparent, but it, it's pretty much the way it's been done in the past. I don't know how we would change it. Granted, it's not necessarily you can do it in business, but this is in business either, so, you know. Margaret, you want to add to that?
Yeah, we change it by having a finance committee. We change it by having line item budgets. We change it by actually monitoring where monies are coming from and to. And, yes, I understand that at the end of the year, there may be a necessity to move money from A to B, but the problem is that when you do that, and you and I, Tom, have talked about this, we should be able to look back over the year and say, did we overestimate A, did we underestimate B? How do we adjust for that in the upcoming budget? So there's a certain, I don't know, I just feel that this is something that we need to train our eyes on and be more vigilant and more disciplined about it. That's all. I understand why this stuff happens, but it's very difficult when you are shifting money in and out in this way within a departmental budget to say whether or not the budgeting for personnel was not appropriate, was it under, was it over? If it was under, we need to think better about next year. If it was over, we need to reduce it. Did we underestimate what we needed for maintenance or equipment? Yes, we did. So now we need to be more realistic in our next budget. So just in terms of, at the end of the day, you know, the bottom line may not change, but I just think that this is an area where the council should really apply some discipline and some analysis to, 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 be, be, just, just be more vigilant and disciplined in how we look at these numbers, that's all.
Yeah, you participate enough in the budget process to know that when we do look at the previous year's budget, we do see what was originally budgeted.
Yes.
And what was spent. So we do see that disparity. Okay.
Yes, I do know, I do know that. But I think, I think, I think in an ongoing, an ongoing basis, month to month, we shouldn't find, like, you know, back in the day when I was in the university system, we had restricted and unrestricted budgets. The restricted budgets were specifically for specific expenditures they could not have spent anywhere else. As I look at the city budget and how things are allocated, in my brain, they are pretty much restricted budgets. So if I'm going to give a department a hundred thousand dollars for equipment, that's only for equipment. If they spend ninety thousand, the other ten thousand goes back into general fund. If they need a hundred and ten, then they need to come back to general fund and say, hey, we underestimated, we needed more. So that feeds into, next year, we, we budgeted for a hundred thousand, but actually we ended up needing a hundred and ten. So next year, we need a hundred and ten in, in equipment. So I just think, from a discipline point of view, at the end of the day, you know, when you go to the bottom right-hand corner of the Excel file, it might all be the same amount of money, but I just do think that having more discipline on these line items would be beneficial, that's all.
Okay. I will call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton?
Aye.
Daskaludi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Nisan?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Fernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Bolo?
Aye.
Presentee Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie?
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a contract with T Two Systems for the acquisition of new parking enforcement and permit management software. This comes from the mayor's office, as well as from the, our parking bureau, who looked over the system. Right now, we have a very poor system that's working out. It's called you move it passport. You've probably seen that name a lot in the bills. And this, the mayor, the parking bureau chief, Tracy, they all worked to find a better system, and this is the one they have found. Can I have an introduction in a second before we go further? Dewan and Shersha, questions?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Belton?
Thank you. I was, I was wondering if any, if we've made a decision about what kind of parking meters we're getting in, do these talk to?
These will talk to, and I, we're definitely careful about, they will talk to any of the potential ones we're looking at.
Any of them.
Yes.
Yeah, Tom, I have a question.
Hold on, Margaret, one second.
Okay, sure, 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 go on.
Yes, I was just wondering how did we end up with this company? Is there, were there other ones that, with different rates? Or was the?
They'll remember.
The chief.
Oh, the chief of police, you found this company, and they did a demonstration here. That's how.
So we don't know if there was any comparable ones with?
No, we were comparing with our existing ones, which we have to give away.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
We compared it with the existing passport, which has to be.
There's, there are very few options in this software space, so we were happy with the demonstration from T Two and second forward with them. What are the terms of leasing this for a period of time, amount of money, return on investment?
Yeah.
I don't have that number on the top where I had, how long.
Tom, I have a question.
Yes.
So when I was trying to get some quotes on something very simple, which was having an engineering company evaluate speed limits, and it was going to be over five thousand, and the policy on procurement, et cetera, was that I had to have these two written quotes, if it was over, I don't know, two or three thousand dollars. Did we have an R F P process here? Who were the other bidders? What was the R F P? What, what actually was done here to arrive at this? Because we have, we're looking at a thing here where we have one company that's being presented. That does not, I, I'm not seeing the R F P process. I don't know who was on the committee to determine that this was the company that we were to go with, and for sixty-two thousand dollars, it seems to me that there should have been more of a process, given that I was required in my little seven thousand dollar project to come up with two written quotes. So can somebody speak to that?
Imagine this goes for the parking committee?
Sorry.
It came from the chief of police. Right, but they answered through the parking committee first.
I'm sorry, I can't quite hear.
It, it did not, I asked if it was bounced into the parking committee prior to presenting.
I, I am on the parking committee. I do not recall, I do not recall this coming up.
Margaret, hold on. Apparently, this came from our city attorney, Andy Howard, and he said we could put it forward because it's an emergency.
And why is it an emergency?
Yeah, passport, it just isn't answering calls, the services aren't being provided, we're losing money. Now, if you want to wait, we can wait. I mean.
I, I would just like a lot more information before I vote to commit the city to sixty-two thousand dollars with a company about which we know very little.
Chief Franklin is on and has their hand up if you'd like to.
Oh, good, I missed your chair. Chief?
Hello, everyone. Just with this discussion, yeah, Margaret, so over the past year, probably longer, the parking bureau has had a lack of response from passport to include for just custom, regular customer service and to fix hardware that we have, which has caused a decrease, obviously, in ticket writing and revenue for the city. So I decided to inquire with different parking systems, who could come and do a demo. I reached out to T Two Parking Systems for a demo, and they responded immediately. I did, I did reach out to one other system. I did, I did reach out to one other system. I don't have it off the top of my head, because I'm, I don't have my emails in front of me. But it never responded, and I also reached out to Passport for a new quote with different items that the city would need for revenue, as well as for enforcement that would better suit our needs, and Passport refused to send me a new quote. After speaking with Andy Howard, T2 Systems is part of Sourcewell, as is the City of Hudson, and we are not required to have an RFP because of that. So, after a demonstration, we moved forward with a resolution to try to have this passed. The upfront cost, the upfront cost is, is more than, I think, what we pay, and the city pays annually for Passport. However, after that initial, there should be a much higher cost saving for this system.
Thank you, Chief Franklin.
You're welcome.
So.
In other words, you heard what the chief said, you don't need an RFP when it's in that system. It means it's been pre-approved, and you don't.
Yeah, no, Tom, this is a conversation. I understand what Chief Franklin said, that we don't need an RFP. So, Chief, the, the emergency situation that we're dealing with here is, can you talk again about what exactly that is?
Passport has breached their contract by not providing the services that we've requested for repairs and their customer service response for us. We've had several broken parking units, system units, that we haven't been able to use. And so, we're unable to, to do what we need to do.
Okay, go. And so, one question, Chief, that I have, when I was reading through this particular agreement, it was a little ambiguous to me as to the privacy regulations within this agreement. Was that something that you reviewed with the city attorney? But I, honestly, I couldn't quite figure out what the privacy protections were in this agreement.
I did not speak with Andy about them. He did get the, this quote as well, so he was able to review it. And he agreed that we could push it forward.
Okay, thank you for that.
More questions?
I was, I, I actually read the document before I got here, and the customer data issue was something that felt a little funny to me. And I wish someone could explain it to me a little.
Crystal, do you have anything to contribute on this, or you haven't looked it over, have you?
I, I didn't go into detail on the agreement, because it had come from Andy on this one. But, I mean, if the, depending, I would have to go through it to be able to answer specific questions on, about the data provisions on it.
What's the issue?
I, I'd like to know what they're using the data for. The way that it's, it's so vague, and it can be left open to interpretation, in my view, and it feels a little funny, like, I wouldn't want to use this system and put my card on it, like, I don't know.
I mean, oh, the data's in your credit card?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we'll have to table this till we get more answers.
I have a question on this before we move. I'm new, obviously, and I, is it normal that, that the, we have a committee, a parking committee, and it seems like you guys weren't aware of this?
No, Gary, you weren't, I'm sorry, what I mean to say is, this should bypass the committee, because it didn't have to go to a committee.
I understand it didn't have to go to a committee.
Right.
But we have a parking committee.
No, there's no need to in this case, because it was an emergency. It didn't have to be sent out an RFP. There's no, I mean, I, first, first of all, I can put anything I might on the agenda. That's the privilege of, of the council president. So, whether it goes to committee or not, it's really not about, you know, it could have, it didn't have to, that simple.
Yeah, I mean, Chris Neil, so, you could put it in, I'll try to pass it on.
Oh, I understand. Now, I just wondered about the communications, not that it had to go to.
Yeah, right, I got it.
You know, to, to Gary, to Gary's point here, I understand it didn't have to go through the committee, and Chief Franklin has explained the emergency situation and the nonresponsiveness of the current vendor, and, and that, that all makes sense. But here we are, being asked to vote on something that was not presented in the informal meeting, where we could have asked these questions and done some digging in, so that we could vote. So, that's, yes, a problem.
If, if we table this, how much money is the city going to lose within the next five years?
That's a good question.
Well, we can call a special meeting.
Yeah.
We could.
What would you like for the special meeting to know before, I'm sorry, what would you like to know before we have a special meeting? Let's be clear, let's make this.
I'd like to know about data.
One, there's things like when we have the privacy issue, which is a question, right? The question, we have another question that, yes, it interacts with every other parking system that the Parking Committee has left into, right, so that, can that be confirmed, I guess? What other issues people have? So, Chrisy, let's understand, the procedural issues, again, are not really relevant to this. It's more about finding out the facts that are in the document, and that's what we'll do.
Yes. I would like clarification on privacy. Uh, I, I would, I would also, I would also, if before, be, if we do go to a special meeting, a couple of things I would like to know is, privacy, are there any other vendors out there? From Chief Franklin's comments, it sounds like she reached out and was not able to find others. But I think the privacy issue is important, and I think the cost issues are important. What, and what, what Rich just raised, if we don't move forward, what are we losing? That's an important consideration, and I think, you know, if we take, if this had been presented a week ago, we could have done some due diligence and researched it and been able to vote tonight, but now it's here on our tables tonight. And we need a little time to look at it and ask questions and talk to people, that's all.
Maybe we should also look at Passport, what they're offering and their privacy, maybe there's.
I think, it doesn't, Dominic, it does not appear that they are offering anything, and they're deficient.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm, no, I'm saying that if they had that in there, yeah.
Also, how much does that system cost, and we're replacing it with something that costs 62? So how much did that one cost? Police chief said that there's a cost savings, so maybe this is a net-net possibility.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, the past history, Passport's been an issue anyway, so, so I, I think the comparison is, is very important, right? Decide this, and this is totally step up, these, these are the differences, and then, you know, we can compare.
Okay.
I just have one question to Tracy, actually. The meeting showed me, that's part of this, or no, that's different?
That's what the Parking Committee is, then. It's moving over. Who does? Oh, no, that's Cheryl. I mean, Crystal.
Tom, you really want me to be Cheryl, I can tell. Just a quick question on the questions about the customer data. Is it the entire section, or I noticed there is one section in here that talks about if customer data is publicly available and is already in T2 Systems' possession from a source other than the customer, otherwise known to it, it has additional rights with it? Is it that specific section that you, you've got questions about? Or is it the entire customer data confidentiality provisions? I just want to make sure that we know what to hone in on.
Yeah, so, Crystal, when I was reading that section, I'm looking at privacy. I want to be really clear on the definition of customer.
Okay.
And I want to be, at the questions that you're raising, I want to be very clear on how they can use data. It's also a little concerning to me, while I completely trust Chief Franklin in her decision that she looked at and she reached out to other vendors, and Passport is obviously not a viable option right now, for a variety of reasons, and this is the best that they've come up with. I would really like to see this vendor present something to the city and make sure that we understand that what we're getting into and what the privacy issues are. So, you know, I had a number of questions as I was reading this. And it just was, and I, I just, it was ambiguous to me, and it just, the protections, because, who is a customer? Is, is this a parking customer? These are definitions I would like to really see clearly delineated.
Franklin, did you want to contribute to this? Her hand is up, isn't it?
Yeah, but it may be.
Chief Franklin?
Yes. I didn't mean to raise my hand if it was up, I didn't mean to do that.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I don't know if I have all the answers to the questions that are being asked.
Okay, so we'll postpone this for, and try to get some of those answers in the meantime. So, look forward to a special meeting? Okay.
So, Tom, Tom, the only thing I want to say on this, sorry. Sorry, Johnny, you're talking. Sorry, Tom, the only thing I want to say is, I, in, in response to Chief Franklin's, concern that this is actually an emergency, I would suggest that we try to schedule a special meeting as soon as possible, when Crystal can get information to us, that we can.
You really have to pay attention here. We have a motion and a second to table this resolution. All those that are tabled, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, moving right along. Yes, we'll be having a special meeting. Okay, the next resolution. Our favorite topic, second favorite topic of the meeting, it's a lot of transfers. It's now. To speak to this a little bit, to remind you, cemetery water and sewer are dedicated funds. All those other funds are not dedicated, in the sense that they can only be used within those categories. But that's neither here nor there. So, this comes from Rob Perry, who's not here. And, and I have an introduction in a second to begin. Shersha, please. Go on. Questions?
I have a question.
Go for it.
I'm sorry. Personal services, what does that mean? What's the definition of that within this?
Payroll.
It's payroll.
Yep.
So it should say, in my mind, it should always read personnel services.
It's, it's, I think it's actually determined, believe it or not, by the state.
Okay.
Because all of these forms, all these numbers that are the way you have to submit your budget to the state.
Okay.
And when you're.
I just kept looking like that going.
I know, don't be nuts. I told you that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll call one, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Duskaludi.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Mison.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Bernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts. Roney.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
And this next one is within the cemetery fund, another one. Going from personal services, AKA payroll. Oh, this is actually not, this is changing the 2024 budget. Yeah. And it's because the House has an emergency problem, and that's where this money is going, to the House maintenance. Can I have an introduction in a second?
What, sorry, Tom, what was the emergency?
Shersha, second? Okay, Gary. What, Margaret?
What, what was the emergency regarding the house?
It's a big question. I think that the heating system fell, and there was a burst pipe.
So, we're moving personnel services to house, house maintenance? And what's going to happen with what was budgeted for personnel services, which assumably was a reasonable budget? When that falls short, $10,000?
I guess we'll just have to, never mind. We'll see. I mean, you know.
That's my whole problem, Tom, with this whole process.
I understand your whole problem. But I don't know what to say. This is just an emergency transfer of money. They'll need more personal services as you're, I mean, payroll service, payments, we'll have to do it. I mean, I, I wish Rob were here to explain it, but we'll kind of tell you.
So did, so did we over-budget personnel services, so that there would be a cushion for covering other emergencies?
I just have a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm so moved to this. Authorizing, we're, we're basically voting on authorizing transfer of funds within the department.
Right.
They're getting these funds, and it doesn't say the amount they're using it, or whatever, they're just.
They're just moving it from one line to another.
There's a mountain there.
There's a mountain there. It's just from one line to their budget.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
But that does involve. I mean, the budgets, the budgets are estimates, so, you know, every month, you go. You have emergencies that come up, and, right, at the end of the year, then you have to look and see, okay, well.
Maybe more over here, maybe less after.
You can see all this, the end of the year, everything is.
Yeah, but I, Rich, I think the issue here is that it's January, and we're already money, moving money around.
I mean, true. It was.
I think with a frozen pipe or something, I mean, that's something. I think you got to look at your budget, say, okay, where can we move this at this point? You know, because we are in, into winter season, maybe, maybe there's not going to be some overtime, I, I don't, I don't know. But I don't think we could, you know, you know, do more damage, we could do more damage if we don't rectify this now to, to a city building, right? So, because we're.
But Dominic, I would understand what you were saying, if we were moving money into personnel services due to the fact that it's the winter and we have, we need overtime, but we're moving money from personnel services into house maintenance.
Correct, correct, that's what I'm saying. So we're, we're in January now, so we, you know, we missed December and everything, so maybe there's more flexibility on what was estimated for, you know, ours, so far. We had a minor winter compared to this week, but I, I don't know, if, if, you know. So, I just think that this is, we don't want this damage to go worse into a building. So I.
Better this than coming out of the fund.
Right, because it's managing within, within their budget, right, right.
Okay, we'll call both, please.
Councilmember Belton. Aye. Duskaludi.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Mison.
Aye.
Morris.
Epstein.
Bernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Roney.
Aye, sorry.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
Okay, yet another one, please. This is for fiscal year 2023, transfer of funds within the police budget. An introduction in a second, please. Go on, second? Shersha? Questions? Your hand up, or anything, Michael, you know, like, with this meetings, I can't really see the hands going up as well.
Can, can you scroll, can you scroll down on this, Michael? Thank you. So, in this particular amendment, or resolution, we have movements from and to that I would characterize as like-to-like. I have no issue with these, with these movements. This is not like moving personnel to maintenance or personnel to equipment. This, to me, is completely reasonable movement of, of monies.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Duskaludi.
Aye.
Maranti.
Aye.
Mison.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Bernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts. Roney.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution appoints Randall Martin to the ID, the industrial development agency. Like by charter, the head of the planning board is normally on this, but Teresa can't do it, so she has asked us to allow a different planning board member, Randall Martin, to be on the IDA. Do I?
Who was on it before? No, I'm saying, who was on it before, so.
That's right, this is just. Thank you, darling. Any other questions? A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Daskaloudi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Mison?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Bernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Roney? Sauer?
Aye.
Volo? Presidente Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution adopts a fee schedule. Pursuant to the Hudson City Code, we, we established a law recently, and this establishes the fees as recommended by the fire department. An introduction in a second. Do I, Tricia? Questions?
It's, it's not coming out. It's, he's never seen it. I saw it today. No, I don't have any questions, so.
It's up there if you want. Up there. Zoom, please. It's pretty reasonable. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Daskaloudi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Mison?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Bernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts? Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Volo?
Aye.
Presidente Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution is a transfer of funds and budget amendment to cover hospitalization expenses for 2023. Heather, are you here? I believe you are. Can you speak to this, please?
Um, I'm, yeah, I'm here. I'm just glancing through it, so.
Oh, no. Oh, wait.
Yeah.
Oh, did I put it wrong? Sorry.
I was wondering, I still could try.
Oh, I know why. These were Word docs on the online, which is why it didn't show up for me. Sorry.
So you can't post it?
I can. It just, I need one second to pull it up on Word.
Okay. So, yeah. Hospitalization expense, extremely over budget. When we did the 2023 budget, what we do is we reach out or we get the information what the rate increases are going to be every year from our, we have multiple insurance providers, but the two main ones are MVP. And the, the single biggest dollar amount is Empire, which is the New York State, sorry, not retirement, the New York State Hostilization Plan. It came in significantly higher than what we had budgeted. It seems to be a combination of the fact that we have more full-time employees than we have had in prior years, because several DPW people have been converted to full-time, which gives them the opportunity to take insurance. And that in combination with more people taking a more expensive healthcare plan, i.e. family over individual or couple. I mean, there's really, it's the first time in, entire time I've been here that it has been so off. I did go and check the 2024 budget and we have approximately, I think, 1.7 million budgeted for next year. And I think this is coming at about 1.55, so hopefully that will be enough of a window to cover any increases. But, you know, unfortunately, it is not an optional expense. It's controlled by contracts and it's controlled by the insurance companies, and we do look every year and ask for our insurance broker to provide us other options so we can compare, you know, the prices. But the union contracts are also very clear in that you cannot substitute anything unless it's equal or better. Though like everyone else in the country, healthcare costs are going crazy, and this is unfortunately the impact of it. But it isn't just the, I just want to emphasize, it's not just the increases because those were taken into account, but it was basically taking an increase assuming that sort of participation would be roughly the same as it had been in prior years. And obviously, that is not the case. We have more people taking the insurance and we have more people taking higher cost insurance.
Heather, I have a question for you on the definition of hospitalization.
Before you ask a question, let me give an introduction in a second, please. Gentlemen, do I, Tricia? Go ahead, Margaret.
Yeah, so Heather, what you're calling hospitalization, because I'm, I've worked in the insurance industry for a long time. Are you talking about health insurance? What, what exactly does hospitalization mean?
Well, that's a very good question, and I'm going to tie it back to Jennifer's question about what are personal services? Because these are all government definitions. Trust me, I came from the private sector and I did not know what personal services was, and I did not know what hospitalization was. But this is, these are the terms that we are given to use by the state. Hospitalization is basically any kind of medical or health insurance. So, for example, I don't know if I can recite them all off the top of my head, but I will try. Empire is the state provided health insurance. It is incredibly expensive, but contractually offered to obligate it to offer it to some people still according to their contracts. MVP is the new alternative we have. So those are both what you would consider traditional, you know, health insurance policies. Then we have Ally Health, which is a telephone, you know, a teleconsulting thing, which frankly, we can probably get rid of. We added it before. I don't know if Empire offers it, but MVP does. It's not a lot of money. CFEA EBT, which is vision care and dental care.
Yep.
There's another vision plan that I can't remember the name of that we just switched, and that's specifically for the police. So it's basically all of those.
So it's, it sounds, Heather, like vision and dental are usually riders. And what's, what the state is calling hospitalization sounds a lot like the broad-based physical health care, which would not just include hospitalization, but also ambulatory care. This sounds like cost increase for basic physical health insurance. Does that sound right to you?
That's absolutely right. So it covers everything, not, yeah, again, hospitalization is a weird phrase, so it's doctor's appointments, it's covering those things. It's prescriptions, it's all of those. And just.
It's basically, it's basically physical health apps and riders for dental. Okay, got it. Thank you very much for that. That's what I thought it was, but I wasn't sure.
Okay, and just because I know there are so many new people here, I want to explain the difference between hospitalization and HRA reimbursement. So when we moved to MVP, we moved to what's called a high deductible health plan, and I know Margaret's going to understand this, but basically, you might, as individuals, might have done this at some point. You get a much lower rate, but you have to come out of pocket for sometimes a significant amount of money before the insurance deductibles kick in and you start paying your $50 copay or whatever it is. The city entered into that several years ago, but the difference is that the city covers the deductible for all employees. Mathematically, it sounds surprising, but it was actually significantly less expensive for the city to cover the deductibles for the employees and pay the lower rate for the high deductible health plan. So that's why we track those as two different numbers. You see, they're both, they're both a 90, 60.8, which is the state, you know, defined hospitalization code. But you can see that the one has the extra .01 because it is a quote unquote hospitalization cost. But we track it separately so that at some point, if it starts getting out of control, we'll know that this may not be the best plan going forward anymore.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome.
A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Daskaloudi? Moranti?
Aye.
Mison?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Bernhagen?
Roberts? Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Volo?
Aye.
Presidente Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution authorizes electronic deduction of service fees by the city's new payroll provider. I think this is, hold on a second. Your, is it ready? Okay, sure.
If you're asking.
Sure. Rich, second. Second, Tricia. Any questions? Very self-explanatory. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Daskaloudi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Mison?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Bernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts? Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Volo?
Aye.
Presidente Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution authorizes a transfer, the designated funds to be encumbered from, to 2024, from 2023, from the friends of Hudson U. An introduction in a second, please. Rich and Councilmember Volo and Councilmember Mison. Any questions? A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton?
Aye.
Daskaloudi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Mison?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Bernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Volo?
Aye.
Presidente Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie.
The last two resolutions concern our contract with the Hudson Police Department. The first authorizes approval of an MOA with the local, of our police department. Can I have an introduction in a second? You will. Do I? Tricia? Any questions? We heard about it all last week from our attorney, our other attorney. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Belton?
Aye.
Daskaloudi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Mison?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Bernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts? Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Volo?
Aye.
Presidente Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie.
And the next authorizes the transfer of funds for contractual expenses. This, we had budgeted in the contingency fund for the amount of money that has now been approved in the contract, so now we have to move it from contingency to the personal services. Introduction in a second. Tricia? Rick, Councilmember Volo. Much more formal group this year. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Daskaloudi?
Aye.
Moranti?
Aye.
Mison?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Bernhagen?
Aye.
Roberts? Roney?
Aye.
Sauer?
Aye.
Volo?
Aye.
Presidente Pedro?
Aye.
Carrie.
Okay, we have two laws to talk about. One, we, we just need a motion and a second to put it on our cables, and that is the law to establish a community choice aggregation agreement. This has been, this came from the Conservation Advisory Council. It went through the legal committee. And, so, can I have an introduction in a second?
I'll introduce.
Was that Margaret?
Yes.
Oh, so I'm introduced and Councilmember Volo, second. Okay, so that's now on the desk, and we will vote on that.
If anyone's, I'm, this is out of the CAC, but we have a couple of people who are on the CAC who could speak to this better. If you want more clarity, I could, I could ask them to come to the next informal. Would that help?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, so. Yeah, I don't think Gary or Lova or Tricia probably know, you know, Ben, of course, since you.
I mean, I'll, I'm, I'm not even, I'm not the expert, so, but I could ask someone else to come and speak to it.
And Margaret, I think, is up to speed on it.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
The CCA, Margaret.
Yep.
I could ask someone to, from the CAC, to come to the next informal meeting to speak if people would think that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay. We have a law to vote on. Oh, excuse me. Although I think, because we have some new members who aren't part of the development of this law, we have some remaining questions, unfortunately.
Or fortunately.
Or fortunate. Can we get Crystal up so we can just talk about, you're not Cheryl, Crystal.
Appreciate it.
I, some of my questions that I emailed you earlier today, and the question was, I mean, I understand this is for commercial use, but, you know, we have, we, we have like people coming up, Instagram influencers and YouTube bloggers who are coming up saying, hey, how are we on Hudson, la, 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 you know, here I am on Warren Street. Would, I mean, I understand the intent is, you know, for, you know, major production companies to file a permit, but when you have your one or two people out there on the street, would they need to have a permit? I mean, because that's who's doing so much of the filming nowadays.
So in looking at the law, I would say, depending on what they're publish, what they're producing or publishing it for, it could fall within the definition of a commercial, you know, filming for commercial purposes. It would depend entirely on what they're using it for. And initially, it was my understanding that this law was really intended for, you know, larger filming productions. What was happening was that, and Michael, Michael Hoffman, I know, initially brought this up to both Andy and I, because, Andy Howard and I. Because what was happening is you could have smaller film crews, anyone essentially, you know, a 50-person film crew, and they could come into Hudson and not get a, not need a permit and not have to pay any fees for filming. And there was complications that can be involved with that depending on how large the filming crew is and how disruptive it is to the area, to the area where they're filming. So this was really intended to capture those types of productions. When you're talking about, you know, influencers, that could really range a variety of different types of filming. So, for example, I know, and I responded in my email to you, so you've got, you know, what's out there and well-known now throughout the country, or say, for example, those First Amendment audits, where you have individuals that are going out and they're taping their interactions with government officials in public places. Well, there are specific First Amendment protections that come into play with that that may interfere with, you know, a permitting process in the, will interfere with a permitting process in those situations. There are other people that are going, going out there and they're filming for their own personal, personal use or perhaps their own personal blog, and then you're going to start getting into a question as, well, what's really commercial here? Is it because you're getting, you know, you're posting this and you're getting advertisers now to your site? Is it now making it a commercial production or not? So we didn't really get into the nuances of any of that in this filming law. What happened was that the city of Newburgh had a filming law. They actually have a, a filming office, which is far more than I think Hudson itself really needs. And we used that as a model law for this, but I, I'll be honest, we did not get into any discussions regarding something, you know, as your individual influencers out there that are videotaping, and I guess I'd have to go back and take it, take another look through everything with that eye, with that concept in mind to see if we wanted to amend it to either capture them or exclude them.
Well, don't you think they would be excluded by virtue of the fact that most of them record on phones or such devices? And the police would never stop somebody recording on a phone? Because that's.
I would say practically speaking, yes, Tom, and that was the first thing that came to my mind, is if someone's out there with a phone or an iPad or whatever, they're not going to be stopped and polled for a permit on this. I doubt you're going to see someone come in with more sophisticated equipment. I doubt you're going to see someone come in with more sophisticated equipment, but there are influencers out there that do, that they absolutely do. If anyone's got kids that watch YouTube, they are absolutely out there. And I would say that if it's a more sophisticated production, yeah, it would fall underneath the permit requirements.
I mean, I'd like to see it in a certain way, you know, but define what the film crew is, if the film crew is like X number of people, and then beyond that, they need a permit. If you're talking like one or two people, then I should say, no, but I think that needs to be, to be like, thought about, otherwise it could be used, you know, indiscriminately.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I, yeah. I mean, it could be enforced. What do you think, Crystal? Do you think we should give it a?
You know, again, I, I would be surprised to see anyone out there with, you know, the camera or the iPad being stopped by the police on something like this, but if the concern is to make sure that the law is extremely clear as to what types of situations we're dealing with, then yeah, adding a minimum requirement for a film crew absolutely would be, would add clarity to the enforcement provisions.
Okay, so then, let's just, I guess we have to, do we have to table it? It will remain on our desk, and we'll look for that revision. Can we take public?
Crystal, Crystal, do you want to send that back to the legal committee, and you and I can discuss with, with, it seems like Rich has some insight on this?
I would say that'd be up to the council or Tom to see if he wants to send it back to the, to the legal committee, but I guess the question that I would have for a revision is, what is the council envisioning? You know, is anything more than two people crew calling for a permit? I would probably lean towards that, but it would be up to the councils, that's a policymaking decision for the council.
So if you wanted to lay this, we could put it back to the legal committee, but I think that simple revision would get us where we want to be.
Alex.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tom. Alex Bichalier, President of Hudson Business Coalition, Rich and I spoke, or Councilmember Volo, and I spoke before about this briefly. One of the other things we're considering is the use of, the use of aerial photography and drones as well, that's becoming more commonplace. It's not uncommon for municipalities to stipulate that anybody doing commercial filming with a drone filed a flight plan with the city at the time of the permit as well, per safe, public safety purposes. I will also say there are some, specifically with the topic of influencers, I think the council would do well to consider offsetting the potential revenue from permitting with their very real influence that these influencers have as a method of promoting the city of Hudson for tourism purposes. So I think maybe there's an exception, or perhaps a different way to think about it for those individuals, even if those individuals are receiving re- remuneration in form of a hotel stay or a free meal from one of the participating businesses, it is a commercial purpose, but they are ultimately for the purposes of promoting Hudson specifically. I know Duchess County has a pretty robust film office as well, I know the word was mentioned, but I think maybe there's some knowledge to be in, in that as well.
Alex. Okay, Crystal, if you want to maybe incorporate some of that as well, Darren?
What number, because I, I side on the, the, the issue of, it's a number of people, how disruptive are they going to be in the streets? What number would you say should not be under this legislation?
I think anything fewer than three or fewer people. Anything beyond that even starts to potentially get disruptive to the flow of traffic or businesses or anything like that, so.
Okay.
Usually you have a production person, a camera operator, maybe a sound operator, boom operator, something like that. The board of the business coalition has two board members who do have a background in film production and commercial production, so maybe if you wanted additional input on this, they would be helpful. At least two, two in their previous lives, yeah.
Cool. Okay. So that's it of our assigned, or in our schedule.
I just have one comment regarding this.
Sure.
Can you get, can you guys hear me clearly, or?
Yes.
Okay. If we are going to make some kind of provisions for influencers or even filmmakers that do, you know, in essence, some promoting of Hudson, maybe it would, it would be better if we can, instead of spelling it out completely into law, have some sort of like a toolkit, kind of like a pamphlet or something like that, if you follow these guidelines, we can, you know, we can allow some sort of an exemption.
That's a great idea. Are you offering to write that?
I would imagine that the, the business coalition would be the, the perfect, since they're the ones kind of suggesting that, that would be great. I would be, I would be willing to help, of course.
That's correct. Alex has agreed. So, great. That's wonderful. Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks.
Okay, so, new business. As you know, our last meeting, Margaret wanted to raise the issue of committees. And as, I have since circulated the document that you wanted to, and I explained to you all in an email why it was not the occasion for doing that, but now it's. So, if you should have, you did receive what Margaret would like to propose and what she'd like to talk about, so I will hand the floor to Margaret.
I think that, Tom, that you sent the document out to everybody, I assume Michael has it, and you can pull it up?
Sure, yeah.
You do?
Yeah, I think it was.
Oh, okay, sure.
Yeah, so, this was, I, I, my tendency when I want to talk about something is to put my ideas down on paper. So, this was not a document that I was proposing for everybody to review, but it was just, these were my ideas. So, in conversation with people over the last two years, and with people returning to the council and so forth, it, I have heard many times that there is a desire to have some establishment of standard committee meetings. So, the purpose of this would be to provide, at the moment, we have, for those of you who are new to the council, truly new to the council, who have never experienced when the council had, had standing committees for various, you know, for infrastructure and so forth, and for those of us like myself, who only have experienced the council during the informal meeting, which goes on usually for about two hours, where the departments report. There was a time when we had committee meetings where various, sometimes multiple departments reported into a committee, they did not report into the informal meeting, and then those, the, the summary of those meetings went to the, to the formal meeting. So, the purpose of considering revision to the, the committee situation is primarily to provide a focused opportunity to address issues within a department. So specifically, if you think of community safety, police department, fire department, if you have a focus committee meeting, where it's not the informal meeting, where the police department, fire department are delivering their reports, it's very summary, it goes on during a meeting that can last two hours, it gives a forum where you can actually have a focused conversation with those departments about emerging issues in their areas. The other thing, and I think this is particularly important in the public safety arena, is that it provides a forum for members of the public to know that on Wednesday, third Wednesday of the month, there's going to be a media, public safety meeting, I can go there, I can bring up whatever the current issues are that are going on that I can discuss, rather than going to an informal meeting that may last for, in, you know, two hours. It also eliminates all of the detailed reports from the departments from the informal meeting, so that the informal meeting can actually focus on resolutions that are coming for, before us, things that we need to, to discuss, issues we need to discuss, so that we can drill down and then vote on those in the next meeting. Those are the reasons why, looking at having these committees, that might be a good thing. Now, there are also, those are the pros, there are also many cons. Some of the, the cons to having these meetings is that you have multiple meetings, you have to staff these committee meetings. Sometimes they will be very brief, you know, but you do have to staff them. The committees that have existed in the past that I would propose, and there are two on here that I really feel strongly about. One of them is finance, and I do think that it would be, behoove the council to have a functional monthly finance committee that actually looks by department at all of the reporting at a financial level, so we can have a rational, comprehensive review of where we are year-to-date on the budget for every department, at, at a fairly high-level line item detail. I would also strongly encourage a public safety meeting, primarily because that's a forum for the public to be able to come and speak, knowing that every Wednesday, Thursday, whatever, once a month, they can come and bring issues relating to public safety. Other meetings that we've had in the past have been infrastructure, which included DPW, water, sewer code, youth and aging, those are the service areas. They currently report, I think, very effectively in the, in the informal meeting. The legal meeting is currently a standing committee that already exists, and it continues to exist. And then economic development, which has not, has not existed for a while, that is another one to consider. So, the other thing I would like to recommend, the IDA and HCDPA, which currently has representation from the council, I think that the council should have monthly updates from those council, from those meetings, so that they know what's actually going on in those meetings. In the two years that I've been on the council, we haven't gotten briefings on a regular basis from those entities, and I would like to see briefings to the, could be just five, ten minutes, but I think the council needs to know what's going on in those. And since the minority majority leads are represented on those meetings, I think the council deserves to hear what's going on in those sessions. So, what I want to do is throw this open to the council, think about, do, first of all, do you want to see some standing committees? If so, which ones would you think would be a priority? On the other hand, if you think that the current informal meeting structure is working, then that's fine. But I just wanted, last week when I was putting this out here, when it was an organizational meeting, I was putting this out there as, here's an organizational thing that we ought to talk about. So, I'm just throwing this out there for everybody to weigh in and say, what do you think? Would, are there some committees that you think are valuable? Are there some that you think not so much? And I'm just throwing it out there for the full council to consider and discuss and provide feedback. That's it.
Thank you, Margaret. Off the top, briefings from IDA and HCDPA are a great idea, I've always wanted them. And since I believe you're on both now, I suppose that means we can count on you for them. And Donovan.
I will do that, I will absolutely do that.
And I think that definitely would be best at the informal as part of a overall, whatever we do at the informal. Okay. Who wants, I guess I mean Dominic wants to talk. He thinks he's going to rave.
So, this is my thought, Tom, and, and just like you just introduced another topic for the informal meeting, right? So, I sent an email on my phone.
And I only didn't respond because we were going to talk about this tonight.
I didn't expect you to respond, so.
That's a joke, Phil, I don't want to respond.
So, I, I think that a finance committee with combination with that, like we talked with the promotion money for the events, I think that, you know, do that combination would be, be great. But I also think that, take the informal meeting, like I said in the email, right, take that long meeting, make two small meetings, right? So just have, like, for example, we had some topics today, that if we had the informal meeting, and then we have just department heads, you know, on another day, say Wednesday, between informal and formal. So, a resolution's an informal, we can ask some, somebody in a department head, say, hey, we got this resolution, tell me about it. Or, if there's a new resolution coming up in the formal meeting, that can be discussed at the department meeting on Wednesday, so that those department meetings are just department meetings, they're going to have the, you know, schedule like, like before, fire, nurse, whatever. So, there's a schedule, so we're just going to know who's coming where, and it's only those discussions and allow public comment. So then, it, it's, then we're not dragging things out, right? So, and, you know, because again, a committee meeting, I, I like the idea of committee meetings, but I think that if a committee meeting is at the end of the month, we have formal meetings or some time, right? Like we had today with discussion about department, right? So, I just think that helps us, because now it also helps, now we get a member, the more committee meetings we have, right? We're going to have to employ Linda to do the minutes, right? So we're going to have minutes. So.
And Michael.
And, and, and Michael, right? So, I'd rather do, I, this is my thought, I'd rather just add, add one more meeting for us, you know, you know, rather than, and then maybe, and then in finance. That gives everyone a shot, you know, for those, you know, those department heads. And I think it, it doesn't drag out, because like you said, you know, like informal meetings, if we have a presentation or whatever, whatever, so I think then we can specialize in just for that, that's just my, thank you.
Yeah, I think sometimes the formal meetings get to be long, because we have a lot of presentations, especially with all this structure going on, building, with the developers. It's not a bad idea with Dominic, actually, now I understand better what you mean, and it's a pretty good idea to separate them. And then maybe, if we have a clarification, do we need a forum for the department head meetings or not? Can we just, if somebody cannot come physically, can we just do it online?
It's, we only need forums to vote on things.
Exactly, so you don't necessarily, even if there's one person, we can include.
Yeah, that's happened. Councilmember Belton?
I, I really like what she wrote up, I, I think that it's going to offer more space to actually dig into things, instead of waiting for department heads to present something to you and then having time to really dig in. And also, if you had a committee for a specific purpose, you could come up with your own referendums and discuss them immediately. You know, instead of what feels to me like kind of a workaround situation all the time.
Okay, what do you mean? How's it a workaround situation?
It's a, it, because I feel like today, I, I, it was the first time I had read any of the things that were, and.
Hey.
A lot of time, we spend a lot of time talking, answering questions, we could do that outside, just get in here and do our thing together and get it done. Or, or come from those meetings and then present to everyone in the room, hey, this is what we discussed in the meeting, blah, 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 I, I don't know.
Okay, no.
There's only, there's, we're only meeting twice a month.
Well, actually, it's not twice, because many times we have, like, special meetings. So if you add up everything, it really, by the end of the year, we have so many more meetings, you know, so I'm just saying.
Maybe some of the special meetings would go away if we already had conversations about them within a smaller group.
Special meeting come, we'll be.
What, what?
Special meeting come like a, we don't know when it's going to come. Make a decision right now, we have to discuss more, and after that, we have to call the special meeting to sit down in the meeting, so we don't know when it's going to be special.
When I read the charter, when I went through and read it.
No, that is the best thing, by the way, especially if you're going to read, read as much of the charter as you can, you can't really read it straight through, but you want to learn.
The first few paragraphs talk about exactly this, finance, public safety, infrastructure, youth and aging, it's not called that, I don't think, legal and economic development. So, those are the points that we need to be hitting as a, as a group, and it's.
And we do, I mean, in the informal, but I see, but I understand what you're saying.
I mean. What were you going to say?
Oh, I went to, Jenny and I went to the H, Hudson Development Court, and Hudson was in court, I mean, I guess it was last week. I guess it was last week, and the issue of parking came up. And, you know, local business owners had a lot of opinions about parking, the parking situation. So, and I said, I said, well, the parking committee meeting, you know? And I, I realized that there's a disconnect. And that, and sometimes, and also I'm going to propose that maybe these don't have to be every month. Like, and economic development can be, like, quarterly even.
Yeah.
Uh, but as long as there's sort of connection, um, and even maybe a, 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 something, it doesn't have to be a monthly meeting. Uh, so, because we don't always, right, but some connection would help.
Yeah, I definitely think having the finance is important because we haven't, um, there are so many figures where we have, and they follow the presentation of Heather. It's just, it's hard to keep up. It's hard to even see it, and many times we don't have that short report, so.
Your brain does different things. No, I'm serious. Like, when you're thinking about one type of thing, it, it feels different, you're in a different headspace than you might be for infrastructure. When we're talking finance or infrastructure, it might need space.
Well, let me just, uh, explain how the informal arrangement began. It was not actually proposed by me, but by two members of the council at the time. And the reason I agreed to it was because I really liked the idea of everybody on the council hearing everything. That was the main impetus, you know? Because what will happen, and I can almost guarantee it, is that however many members there are, say, the finance committee, three or five, whatever we end up with, they'll be the only ones who actually, you know, follow Heather's report and dig down deep into it. And that might not be bad. To Margaret's argument that more people show up for specific meetings, time does not, uh, history does not prove that to be true, but that's okay. It doesn't mean it won't happen in the future. I'm, I'm totally open to some version of more committees. Um, in fact, I would like to, uh, incorporate both the truck committee and the parking committee into an infrastructure committee. Because it's, it does, even though the truck committee isn't technically infrastructure, it's sort of his. Um, it's the best place for it. We did have a housing and transportation committee once. But that, uh, uh, it just sort of petered out. And that happened to reach the councilman's goal, the point. You're right, we don't need meetings every single month. But I think, on the other hand, you can schedule them and then decide, hey, is there anything new this month or not? And as you may have noticed, our zoning board of appeals has canceled on meetings because they have no business, you know? So you don't need anything. So if we understand that it's not an obligation to have a meeting for these various committees every month, I think we've made an improvement to the test and some kind of compromise for all these other ideas. I haven't heard from this side at all. Anybody have any strong opinions about this? Dominic.
So, we just thought, Tom, is, you know, my, my first couple of years, I went to every, every committee meeting, even if I wasn't on it, because the knowledge, right? So it did take up a lot of time, right? So I do like the idea of condensing these committees, you know, whether it's public safety or, you know, whatever, condensing them. But it still comes down to, because you're, you're going to choose who's on those committees.
Right.
So ultimately, it's still come down to us as the council members representing our consensual to show up to these meetings, even if we're not on those, you know, committees.
That's true.
So that's why I thought with my thought, you know what I mean? If we're condensing all in one day, um, you know, and, you know, so, and, you know, everything's there in one day. Um, it can also be recorded and repeated if someone needs to, you know, you know, have something, you know, repeated.
And you have all the council members hear them, you know? So to your point, you're not going to have some listen to important others' thoughts.
On the other hand, because we have so much more, open government in the sense of everything's recorded now, there's no reason that the various committee meetings can't be circulated to members who are not on those committees.
Exactly.
Sure, yeah, so, you know, let me, let me, uh, I'll have something.
It's not the same as being.
Uh, sorry, could I just mention that we have a member of the public with, who has had their hands up for a while?
Oh, where? I'm sorry, with the few meetings, it's very hard for me to see the hands raised, but we'll get, we're still in the council.
I know, I understand. I just wanted to make you aware that there is a member of the public.
So, one more thing, Tom.
Yes, sir.
While we're discussing, you know, the committees and everything. So, uh, I, I know on, on the website, it's still saying that, you know, we're connected to the radio. Is there a way to either read, you know, start that up or take it off the website so we're not giving people those messages?
I think it's redundant, but do you think anybody listens to it on the radio? I mean, that was before we had all this, this.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if people have the choice, I think it's easier to pop on Zoom or pop on, you know what I mean?
And Michael, we aren't still putting everything on YouTube, right?
Yeah, it's just a little bit delayed.
So can we get rid of that connection to the radio since we're not using it anymore? That was from when we didn't have all this.
You know, yeah, absolutely. It served a purpose.
I mean, yeah. Okay, any other councilmen before we go to the public?
Yeah, I would like to say something, Tom.
Sure, go ahead.
I do not actually see very much overlap between parking and trucks. And the truck committee is working, we are now embarking on a, a new initiative to look at the weight limits on the streets. And a lot of the issues relating to the trucks and trans, and the movement of trucks across the city, uh, movement of trucks from Greenport through Hudson to Greenport. I do not see that that has any relationship to parking. I think the parking is a completely different issue. Uh, infrastru- infrastructure, sorry, I'm not finished. Uh, issues relating to infra, sorry, sorry. Issues relating to what I would call infrastructure, which relate to a lot of what, uh, Rob Perry deals with, with the conditions of the roads and so forth. I would see more of an overlap with his area and the truck. And I've actually, uh, talked a lot with him on, on some, and he's given me good guidance on some of these issues. Uh, I do not see any overlap between parking and trucks, sorry.
That's fine. Are you finished?
Yes, I'm done.
Thank you. Um, parking involves definitely infrastructure because we're talking about replacing the physical, um, meters. Uh, I think that's.
Trucks do not park. The trucks, the trucks that we are concerned about do not park. They are 53 feet long, they come through Hudson from Greenport and go through Hudson to Greenport. That's what we're concerned about.
You can say that parking is part of infrastructure, trucks are part of infrastructure. We may not overlap, but.
Yeah, you can make, you can make it a huge thing, or you can try to focus on the fact that we have trucks coming into Hudson and out of Hudson that have nothing to do with parking.
I, I agree. I agree, I agree with you, Mark. I think the issue is trying to get enough people to go to all these different meetings. That we want to consolidate them that we could, so that, you know, for, for people's time and consideration of people's time. Thank you. Sure, sure.
Yeah, well.
Councilmember, please.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, we have one of the, uh, really dangerous intersection in our city of the past term, which I mentioned a couple of years ago, uh, in, when I was individually in committee, uh, by the hospital, Columbia Tram Five, and, uh,
Oh, yeah.
Very dangerous intersection.
The Bermuda Triangle with Hudson.
Yeah, it's terrible.
So we have to do something about it. Uh, I mean, every month, I believe, somebody's getting hit in the air. I mean, when they come from 23th Street to the Columbia Street, nobody's stopping, somebody coming this way, and very good. I almost carried maybe 20 times.
I'm afraid every time.
So clearly, you will be on that committee. Yeah. Okay, we, uh, have a comment from the public. Mister, I can't read the name from here.
Thank you.
Oh, wow.
Hello, can, can you hear me all right? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, first of all, I would like to second Ms. Morris's initiative. Uh, back in 2021, when the committee system was reformed, I had some criticisms of the reform, which I will try to distill. Basically, removing the existing committee structure eliminated another stage at which the public could observe the workings of government, become acquainted with the issues, and if possible, even, uh, provide some input. Uh, in terms of the council members, I thought that the committees, as they existed, provided an intermediate stage between the individual council members and the council president. And I thought that the reforms increased the role and sort of exaggerated the role and the power of the council president at the expense of, of council members. So I favor returning, uh, to something more like the pre-existing system, which makes the government of Hudson both more democratic and also more representative in reflecting the, the wishes not only of the people, but of also the people's representatives. And Matt McGee would also like to make a statement.
Yes, uh, the committee system has been a feature of our government since the founding. And it, it's a vital and important part of it. My favorite committee ever was in, in the Constitutional Congress. They had a committee called the Committee of Style. Those are the people that rewrote what was presented to them as the constitution and wrote what we have today, which is really rather splendid. And I think committees are very important. I also think showering of the people having, uh, different people having office as chair of committees instead of one person chairing them only when they meet at the council, at the informal meeting. I think that it's better to have it spread among the various members of the council. Thank you.
Matt, I don't really understand that last, at the informal meetings, have it.
There's only one chair. There's not a variety of people chairing the various committees.
You still have chairs in the committees, you have different people, you know, presenting to the public, as opposed to just, unless you sit there and say nothing. About what?
About, uh.
About whatever committee that they're chairing.
The informal meeting, you're the chair, so, and you're, so you're in charge of all the departments, you know? So I think what they're saying is, other people have an opportunity to be chair of these committees to, you know, to help, you know, present.
Present exactly what, but I must say, because.
Whatever the ideas were in the, I, this is what I'm understanding. Whatever the ideas are that have been discussed within the committee, the chair of that committee would come and present to everybody else.
I see, so theoretically, if you were chair of, uh, whatever future infrastructure committee.
Right.
What would you do at the informal meeting?
No, I think what, what, what Jennifer says, if somebody comes to you, Jennifer, and says, I'm sorry, council.
It's okay.
Falcon, um, you know, I want to discuss this, right? So then it's discussed at that committee meeting and bring up an idea of at that committee meeting, you know, right? We don't have that opportunity right now for people to go individually to someone and say, I want to explain my story and then bring it to the committee. I mean, so I think that's, and then, then if it's important enough, whether it develops a resolution or whatever, then it comes from the committee.
I mean, it's like the Conservation Advisory Council, right? I'm the chair of the Conservation Advisory Council, right? Fine, so when an issue comes up that's related to that, I can speak to it. Or if I can't speak to it, I can get the person who can speak to it here.
Sure.
The idea is that I'm the expert on, on, on that issue. Got it. No, I, I, I agree with almost all of it. I, I, the only thing I disagree with is, is Ronald's suggestion that more power redounded to me, which is really, I mean, I mean, and it wasn't my idea to begin with. I have no interest in having more power than that is already written in the charter that I have. And as I've told you all in the email, that includes assigning people to committees. So in the next couple of days, you will be getting both a list of what we decide to do, or I decide what I do, and who's on what committee. Now, another question, remind, ponder here, is do we want three or five members per each committee?
Tom, Tom, could I just make a comment here? I've been listening to what everybody has to say. Because I threw this, I threw this out here to hear, hear what everybody thought about the committees, right? Um, the two committees that I really care about are the finance committee and the public safety committee. Those are the two that I think are very important for the city. Uh, the legal committee is a standing committee. The truck committee is an ad hoc committee. The parking committee is an ad hoc committee. Anything else that you decide is fine. Um, but the two that, that I, um, personally most invested in are public safety and finance. I know that Dewan chaired public safety in the past. Uh, the primary interest I have in the public safety committee is that it does provide a standing standard forum, forum for members of the public when not every month, but every once in a while, there's an issue where the people want to have a situation where they can come and speak to law enforcement or the fire department about an issue in the community. I think that's a really important function to have. That, that's my whole input on the whole committee conversation.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I, I think with the number, I mean, ideally, you know, you can start with five, right? And say, you know, among the council members, you know, everybody has their strengths, right? So it would be like one, one council member for each committee, you know? With each, and then if someone says, I, I don't, I don't want to be out of two people, and then you can defer to someone else. But start off saying, hey, between the wards, these are, who wants to sit on these committees? Right, right? Because everyone has different strengths. And, um, so someone can bring something to the table, um, you know? And it has representation from each ward on those committees.
Okay.
I, I, personally, Dominic, I don't think ward representation is relevant. Honestly, I don't.
It's not much numbers, and, I mean, that, to start with, it doesn't have to end that way.
If you're, if you're going to go with ward representation, you're going to have to have five people on every committee, and that is unmanageable. And I honestly do not think that that is, I think we really need to get past being, I think we, there are only less than 6,000 of us in this village. We need to get past the worgism.
I'd be happy to do a quarterly chair, quarterly economic development. Okay, well, I'll come up with something and I'll circulate it offline. And we'll, we'll know by the, what's today, Tuesday, by then, 200,000. Great, I'm glad we had a chance to talk about it. And, um, uh, I think it's possible to come up with something that'll make everybody more or less happy.
So, Tom, thank you very much for putting this on the agenda. Uh, what I would like to suggest is that, uh, everybody on the council think about it and maybe submit their thoughts to fellow council members on where they are on this, so that we can kind of all weigh in and think about it. And, and then.
That's not really good, because that's really having a meeting.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's having a meeting outside of the public. You really can't be doing that.
Everything that we, everything that we do via email is available through Freedom of Information.
It is, but you still can't have that, you really shouldn't be circulating conversations like that out of the public view.
And, and best practice, best practice would be for that to be in a meeting, um, particularly if there's going to be any vote that stems from it. So you want to have those conversations be completely open.
Okay, so, Crystal, I'm not suggesting votes, I'm just suggesting that people think about this and talk to each other, that's all. I don't think there's anything nefarious about that.
No, no, I'm saying, just in your work, just kind of, you know, how things go. Um, okay, I think that's, uh, what.
There was one, there was one other thing on my document, Tom. It, in the procedural meeting last, in the organizational meeting last week. Because I, as you know, I like to put my ideas together on a page so that I know what I'm saying. And the last item on my list was, um, relating to resolutions. And I think you did a pretty good job tonight. But I think whenever a resolution comes before the council, we need to know where it's coming from, who the sponsor or sponsors is, and that they need to, they or he, she, or they need to present the resolution, where it came from, and why. And I think you did a good job on that tonight.
I don't think that's worked on a lot of cases, but I will think about that.
And, and very frequently, we have resolutions that come up from, uh, God knows where, but that did not happen tonight, and I appreciate that.
Alex, you want to say something?
I am still Alex Patralla. I'll introduce him. I'll go sledding, I'm sure. As I said before, I'm the current president of Hudson Business Coalition. Speaking on behalf of the business coalition, we're a 501(c)(6) membership organization. We're very excited to be working with new council this year. We're seeing so many familiar faces and so many new faces as well. The issues, you know, many of them discussed tonight that are most pressing for the business community, the preservation of community character among Hudson's businesses, the parking issue, which obviously I know has been mentioned before tonight. And then the development of Hudson's, which is important to the future of Hudson's business community. As mentioned earlier, we, we hosted the first of several business round tables. We did it in conjunction with Hudson Development Park. We have more coming up. I welcome all of you to come. We'll have a different speaker each time, and it's a great opportunity to interact with members of the business community. And, I'm sorry.
Food.
And food and beverage always, yes. We have social events all throughout the years. We're all, we're all welcome to attend. It's also another great opportunity to meet business owners. One other thing that I'd like to touch on, and then I'll wrap up. Obviously, you know, through no fault of the council or city government, the issue of national grade has been a great one. And their gas lines had a huge impact on, on the bottom line for a lot of businesses throughout Hudson in the past year. Which, hopefully, we can come up with some creative solutions in partnership with the council that will really help to offset some of those losses that those businesses suffered over the last quarter and the last several months. So I'm sure you've heard from your constituents, but it just.
Yeah, and as I said, all the constituents are contacting me, there's truly, truly nothing we can do. They try constantly. We've reached out to electeds higher than us, there's nothing we can do. They have a right of way and they can work when they want. They don't even tell us when they're going to work. It's really very frustrating.
They have their own work.
Exactly.
Their own schedule.
Their own schedule, and it's very frustrating, and I'm sorry for anybody who's been negatively affected by it.
Alex, 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 this is Margaret.
Everybody wants to come and eat dinner, but I, I, I need to say this aloud. There are so many business owners that I know personally that are in danger of closing. And if Warren Street is all boarded up again, guess what? No tourism. We have no economy. So it's super important that they, they, they know what's going on in their own, in front of their own business. They've lost so much money for Christmas.
There was an economic development study referring these issues under advisement.
Yes.
You would, we would have got to the same place.
Same, but giving people form, yeah.
No, they have a form, trust me.
Tom, if I, Tom, if I could just speak to Alex for a moment?
What, what, Dominic?
When the hospital, they cut the phone lines at the hospital like for two days when they were.
I believe, if I can confirm this, the mayor has constantly tried to reach out and response is null. What did he say about crickets? Margaret?
Yes, sorry, Alex, thank you very much for your comments. So as you know, the legal committee has been working on revising language in the, the I don't want to call it protection, but defining what is an, is not acceptable in terms of chain businesses in town. And I had reached out to a couple of people in the business community. Jenny and I have met about this. She has a good background in this area. And I will look forward to your contributions in how we can craft the language in the code and in the local law to ensure that our code and local law provides an environment that is conducive to, to the sustainable development and, and ongoing profitability of local businesses in town. But we need your input in the language.
Yeah, absolutely. And we look forward to participating in that, hopefully attending the next legal.
Okay, because you shut, members shut up for one meeting and then kind of disappeared, so.
Yeah, we, we really, we really, I am not a retail person. I am not a business, I have a different professional background. We need your input. If we can write code and law that will actually promote business in Hudson, and we need you, and we want you.
Michael, is that a new vision and by Ron or is that the?
I have not been keeping track of that, sorry.
Ron, did you want to speak again?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to make a brief response to what you said about my comments. The question of power is an interesting one, and the charter does say that the council president shall appoint all committees thereof. The question is, what are the implications and how sweeping are the implications of that power that is granted to the president by the charter? The second question is, I just wanted to make sure I understood you to say that when the committee system was reformed in 2021, it did not, it was not on your initiative, but it was at the suggestion of two council members? Okay, well, that's news to me. Thanks. You, you couldn't say who they were.
I'd rather not.
Okay, thank you. But I, I, this was, this is completely unknown to me. Thank you.
So reversed back, it's on the same premise, right, on advice of the council?
Sure.
Welcome to the germ.
Yeah.
Everyone in the house?